Six test one forty seven. Streedery Program and Protest Process Amendment Act of two thousand twenty five. As a reminder, witnesses will have three minutes to provide testimony and should remember to mute their microphones when they are not speaking. We're talking about the witnesses who are testifying virtually. As always, the committee invites all witnesses to submit written testimony on the council's hearing management system page online. And now, let me check and see if we've been joined by any of my colleagues on the committee. I do not see anyone. Okay. First, we're going to turn to our agenda in Bill twenty six dash two nineteen, the Malcolm X Extension of Disposition Authority and Term Sheet Amendment Act of two thousand twenty five. This bill was introduced on April second of this year by Chairman Mendelson at the request of the mayor and referred to the Committee on Business and Economic Development on April eighth, two thousand twenty five. This bill, if approved, would extend the time for the mayor to dispose of district-owned real property known as Malcolm X located at thirteen fifty one Alabama Avenue and authorize the disposition. According to the mayor, the proposed development of the property will make a mixed-use building with one hundred fifty, one, two, and three-bedroom rental housing units with ground-floor commercial space. This commercial space will include seven thousand five hundred square feet of daycare space, two thousand square feet of community-serving retail, and a healthy food retailer. All rental units will be affordable to households at thirty percent, fifty percent, or sixty percent of AMFI. I'm now going to turn to our one public witness that we have for this measure. And again, remind anybody who might be testifying via Zoom to mute their microphones. So we're going to turn to Iman Smallwood, Development Manager for Bannaker Communities, Congress Park Community Partners LLC. Good morning to you.
Good morning. How are you?
I'm doing well. Thank you for joining us this morning. You begin your testimony whenever you're ready. You're going to have three minutes.
All right. Good morning, Chairman McDuffie. My name is Iman Smallwood. I'm the Development Manager for Bannaker Communities. I'm here today on behalf of Congress Park Community Partners to testify in support of the extension of the disposition authority and term sheet for Malcolm X located at thirteen fifty one Alabama Avenue Southeast, originally authorized under the Malcolm X Surplus Declaration and Disposition Approval Act of two thousand twenty two. Under the original two thousand twenty two Surplus and Disposition Act, we proposed a mixed-use development with one hundred eighty all-affordable units to include seven thousand five hundred square feet of daycare space, two thousand square feet of community-serving retail, and forty-three parking spaces. That project was met with overwhelming community support, including unanimous backing from ANC eight eight. Unfortunately, two unforeseen issues have delayed the execution of this, of the disposition. One, after the original surplus and disposition authorization, we discovered that a heritage tree is located on the site. Since that time, the district's laws regarding heritage trees have changed, and current regulations no longer permit the removal of heritage trees on district-owned property. This has required us to significantly reevaluate and redesign aspects of the site's plan in a way that both protects the heritage tree and maintains the integrity of our development program. To comply with the new laws, we had to redesign the site plan, which unfortunately meant reducing the number of units from one hundred and fifty, one hundred and eighty to one hundred and fifty. Despite this reduction, the development will still include one, two, and three-bedroom apartments, one hundred percent all affordable to households earning between thirty and sixty percent of MFI. Our team has remained committed to preserving community benefits, sustainability, and strong local participation, including job creation and equity for Ward Eight residents. Second, the site included a building restriction line that needed to be removed in order to proceed with the proposed development. The removal of the BRL required extensive legal negotiation coordination, which took longer than anticipated, but I am happy to, I am happy to report that today, the BRL has been successfully removed, clearing a major hurdle for us to move forward. Despite these delays, we remain fully committed to delivering the project with the same level of quality, community benefit, and local engagement that we originally promised plus more. We simply need additional time to complete the necessary regulatory steps and finalize the disposition. We respectfully asked the council to approve this extension so that we may move forward and realize the full vision of the Wilhelmina Rolark at Congress Heights Metro and name chosen to honor a true champion of Ward Eight and a legacy of service that we intend to uphold. Thank you again for your time and continued support.
And thank you for your testimony. Really appreciate you providing it this morning. I do have a few questions for you before we move on to our government witness. We, and my, my team and I have reviewed the amended term sheet provided by DEMPED as part of the extension of disposition request. On this term sheet, it states that the project is now entirely located on lot triple zero nine in square five nine one four instead of a portion of the lot, which was previously indicated in the original term sheet. I don't know if this is what you talked about in your testimony, but, but has the location and size of the project changed since the original disposition?
The location has not changed.
Okay. Tell me a little bit more about the, and I don't know if I'm jumping the gun on my prepared questions, but tell me a little bit more about this, this issue with the building restriction line.
So the building with this, to my understanding, it was cutting through a portion of the lands, so we would not be able to build as many units.
Okay. Okay. And then you also have the, the issue with the heritage tree that you mentioned in your testimony. So according to the amended term sheet, the project is providing one hundred fifty affordable units rather than the one hundred and eighty affordable units that were originally slated for the project. You know, a loss of, of thirty units is significant. Talk about why that is.
So the heritage tree can no longer be removed, so we have to keep it there and to maintain the integrity and to make sure that we keep with one hundred percent affordable units. That was the best way to decrease the project size.
Okay. And, and how has it affected the, the number of sort of larger family-sized units? Is it, did it just, how did you reduce it? Is there fewer, are there fewer three-bedroom units as a result of the reduction in the overall unit count?
I can get back to you with that exact answer, but we did our best to make sure, to try to stay in line with what we originally promised.
I appreciate you following up on that one. Does the issue with the heritage tree or the building restriction line or any other challenges that you all are facing in the market have any effect on the amount of daycare space and retail space being proposed by the project?
No, just the number of units.
Okay. So assuming that this extension is approved by the council, what's y'all's timeline on, on, you know, getting this project going?
So we would like to move forward immediately with design and hopefully to close on construction next fall.
Okay. And, and you all are asking for a four-year extension for, for this?
Yes, to, well, to be extended until March tenth, twenty twenty seven, so two additional years.
Two years, additional years. Okay. And, and have you had occasion to, to engage with the ANC around this project? I believe it's ANC eight C oh six. I know you mentioned that there's support for the project, but...
Yeah, ANC eight E.
Okay.
We had unanimous backing.
Okay. You, you talked about, and this is important to the committee and to the council, in your testimony, you stated that your team is committed to preserving community benefits, affordability, sustainability, and strong local partnership, participation in job creation for Ward Eight. I understand that the developer, you all have a history of engaging around those things, which is important. Talk a little bit about the community benefits being provided with this project and, and the types of jobs that might be created associated with this development.
Yes, so the retail space will be centered around a community healthy food retailer, which will create jobs and bring a benefit to the community, one that we find is missing in that area. And of course, the construction of the project and the operations moving forward after that.
Okay, so, so some temporary construction jobs as well as permanent jobs associated with the retail and the community center, the daycare.
Daycare center, yes.
What about the CBE use? You all have submitted a subcontracting plan to your last thirty-five percent on the CB side?
I can get back to you with that, with that answer.
Okay. Well, if you could, it'd be great if you could, if you can provide, and we probably asked DEMPED, they, they should provide it to us as well, but just the actual subcontracting plan that I'm sure DSLBD should have by now. All right, you said you would like to get going as soon as possible. Do you expect, if we, if we extend this at the council, do you expect any anticipated delays with the project due to any uncertainty in the market right now?
No, not, not that I know of. I'm very confident that we'll continue to move forward.
Okay. All right, I don't have any additional questions at this time. I appreciate your testimony this morning.
Okay, thank you.
Now I'm going to turn to our government witness, Director of Real Estate, the Office of the Deputy Mayor, Planning and Economic Development. As always, we swear in our government witnesses who appear before us, so if you can raise your right hand before you're seated, thank you. Do you swear or affirm on the penalty of law that the testimony you're about to provide to the council of the District of Columbia and the Committee on Business and Economic Development is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you very much, and good morning to you. Thanks for joining us. You can begin your testimony whenever you are situated.
Good morning, Chairperson McDuffie, members and staff of the Committee on Business and Economic Development. My name is Pam Franselbein, and I am the Director of Real Estate within the Office of the Deputy Mayor for Planning and Economic Development or DEMPED. I'm here to testify to support Act twenty six dash two one nine, the Malcolm X Extension of Disposition Authority and Term Sheet Amendment Act of two thousand twenty five. The approval of this act will provide the mayor two additional years to dispose of District of Columbia-owned real property known as the former Malcolm X Elementary School located at one three five one one Alabama Avenue Southeast and known for taxation purposes as lot zero 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 nine in square five nine one four, referred to here as the property. The originally authorized bill, B twenty four dash zero nine five three, the Malcolm X Surplus Declaration and Disposition Approval Act of two thousand twenty two, was approved by council on March tenth, two thousand twenty three, and the disposition authority expired on March tenth of this year. I would first like to thank you for holding today's hearing and recognize the invaluable contributions and support of the community, particularly the past and present members of ANC six, ANC eight E and eight C, the residents of Congress Heights and Ward Eight, and the many other stakeholders who have been active in the Malcolm X redevelopment project. We look forward to continuing to work with all of these stakeholders. The redevelopment of Malcolm X will deliver approximately one hundred fifty rental housing units. These units will range in size from studio to family-sized three-bedroom units. All the units proposed will be affordable to households earning up to sixty percent of median family income or MFI, with twelve units for households earning up to thirty percent MFI, forty-eight for households earning up to fifty percent of MFI, and the remaining ninety for households earning up to sixty percent of MFI. The development will also feature accessible ground-floor commercial and community space, including seven thousand five hundred square feet dedicated to daycare services, two thousand square feet of retail space for a healthy food retailer, an office for ANC use, and approximately forty-three parking spaces. On April twentieth, two thousand twenty one, DEMPED awarded the project to Congress Park Community Partners LLC, or the developer, and the developer has made notable progress on the project since then. The developer filed a math amendment application with the zoning commission on October fifth, two thousand twenty one, to rezone the site from RA one to MU eight, which was approved in February, two thousand twenty two. Developer also executed a community benefits agreement with ANC eight E on October eighth, two thousand twenty one. The legislative package for the land development and disposition agreement was submitted to the council on July fifth, two thousand twenty two, and approved on March tenth, two thousand twenty three, and executed on April twelfth, two thousand twenty four. DEMPED also advanced, and the council approved, removal of the building restriction line in Bill B twenty five dash zero eight two five entitled Removal of the Highway Plan and Building Restriction Line from Lot Nine in square fifty nine fourteen along the west side of Congress Street Southeast, SO twenty two dash zero one six four two, Act of two thousand twenty four. This legislation removed an existing fifteen-foot building restriction line on Congress Street that limited the development potential on the site. The legislation was introduced by council on May twentieth, two thousand twenty four, and the hearing was held on July eleventh, two thousand twenty four. The council approved the legislation on October first, two thousand twenty four, and the bill went into effect on December seventeenth, two thousand twenty four. Until this process was complete, the developer was unable to advance plans and drawings added, adding to the project's delay. Additionally, it was determined by an arboretum confirmed by the D.C. Department of Transportation, Urban Forestry Administration, that an existing heritage tree on the site could not be removed or relocated as there were no viable relocation sites. As a result, the developer redesigned the building to accommodate and protect the heritage tree. The redesign has resulted in the loss of thirty units, which has necessitated the amendment to the term sheet that now provides for approximately one hundred fifty units and not the one hundred eighty units originally approved. Approval of this extension and term sheet amendment will ensure this vacant lot is redeveloped and placed back into productive use, providing approximately one hundred fifty new housing units, a seven thousand five hundred square-foot daycare, and two thousand square, two thousand square feet of community-serving space. This extension will also enable the developer to complete its design development and work on assembling the financing resources necessary to develop and deliver this project during a time of limited affordable housing resources in an economically challenging market. Thank you for your time and consideration of this legislation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
And thank you for your testimony. I have a few questions about the extension. I think you both testified, and the developer mentioned that there's been a reduction in the amount of overall units, I think about thirty units or so. I asked the developer, but, you know, it, it's a significant amount given the overall unit count and, and the need for affordable units across the district, but also in that community. Do you know if it's been a reduction in the overall sort of family-sized units?
I believe the unit mix has, has remained roughly the same, so there are twenty percent of the units are still the three-bedroom units, so the larger units.
So it's just reduced, the percentages stayed the same, but just it's, it's a fewer amount of units?
Roughly, yes.
Got it. Okay. And then talk about the, this, the challenges with the building restriction line. I know there's legislation that was passed, but also talk about that, you know, in connection with the heritage tree. Just how does that impacted? It's good that we, we were able to, to pass the law around the building restriction line, but the heritage tree seems to be, you know, challenging.
Yeah, the heritage tree issue was challenging. As Iman mentioned in her testimony, this, the, the change in legislation that remove the ability for the district to remove heritage trees on project it owns has the impact on projects like this, where the district has property where it can provide a lot of affordable units, and then no longer having the ability to remove heritage trees on property the district owns can impact projects, and in this case, did so quite significantly by reducing the number of units that we can build by thirty.
Okay. Is it your understanding, but let me ask you differently. In terms of like just the market conditions, there's been a lot of challenges with projects generally, and that's no exception for projects that are on government-owned sites. Talk about this project in the context of, of, you know, the market. Do you see any challenges with financing or other issues that might delay this project?
Not specific to this project. I think, as you're aware, the industry in general is, you know, facing tough times in terms of market conditions. Costs are high, costs remain high, rates remain fairly high, and the uncertainty in the market, I think, is just adding to the challenge of getting lenders and investors to commit to a project. Added to that, on a project like this where it's one hundred percent affordable, projects like this rely on subsidy. In this case, it's in the form of Housing Protection Trust funds and the bond cap allocation and four percent tax credits. So, you know, they'll be competing for those resources.
And that's still yet to be determined, both those resources?
Right, yes. Once this legis, if, if this legislation to extend the disposition authority is approved, then the developer can pursue financing.
Okay. Have they not pursued financing previously, given their previous extension?
I suspect that the developer has been kind of out in the market, but until, you know, unless they have certainty around site control and can advance their drawings and have a firm, you know, business plan and development plan to show lenders, it's difficult to get commitments.
Just talk generally, if you could, summarize why the extension, I'm sorry, the amended term sheet required for Malcolm X disposition. I, I heard the, the developer during her testimony talk about engagement with the community. You also mentioned engagement. Is it your understanding that this project has support from the ANC?
Yes, we do. We have a copy of the community benefits agreement that the ANC signed.
Okay. And is it ANC eight E or eight C or both?
It is ANC eight E.
E? Okay. And any support or opposition from local community organizations that you're aware of?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay. Okay, I, I don't have any additional questions. If the committee has any additional questions after today, then we will be sure to reach out to your office. Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
The next bill we will consider is Bill twenty six dash one twenty one, the St. Elizabeth's East Parcel thirteen Extension of Disposition Authority Amendment Act of two thousand twenty five. The proposed bill was introduced on February eleventh, two thousand twenty five by Chairman Mendelson at the request of the mayor. It was referred to the Committee on Business and Economic Development on February eighteenth, two thousand twenty five. The bill, if approved, would extend the time limit for the disposition of St. Elizabeth's East Parcel thirteen from two years to six years due to several factors in the development process. The deputy of planning, Deputy Mayor for Planning and Economic Development is requesting an extension. These factors include complex site conditions involving Wamata infrastructure and soil conditions, which we will get into during the question and answer portion of the hearing. The extension of the disposition, according to the Office of the Deputy Mayor for Planning and Economic Development, and the newly-approved developer would allow for the successful development of approximately four hundred twenty housing units and twenty-one thousand square feet of retail commercial uses. I will now call the public witness for this project. We only have one, and that's Buah Benitie, founding CEO of Dante's Partners. Good morning to you. Thanks for joining us this morning. Begin your testimony once you all see it and situated. You'll have three minutes.
Good morning, Chairman McDuffie and esteemed council members. Thank you for the opportunity to participate in today's hearing. My name is Buah Benitie, and I'm the founding CEO of Dumars Collective, a black-owned, Washington, D.C.-based firm, committed to creating and preserving affordable housing across the district. Our companies have proudly served the district for nearly twenty years. Throughout that time, we've remained at the forefront of delivering affordable housing solutions in D.C. We've partnered with the city on numerous developments to ensure our most vulnerable residents have access to quality, affordable homes. To date, the Department of Housing and Community... We're good? Okay, sorry. Sorry. To date, the Department of Housing and Community Development has invested over three hundred million dollars into Dante's Partners-led development deals, translating into over a billion dollars in total development cost. These transformative development projects have helped generate generations of wealth, foster stable communities, and deliver sustainable impact throughout the district. I am here today to request support from you and your colleagues in advancing Parcel thirteen, a project with a legacy deeply rooted in the work of Neighborhood Development Company. As you may know, NDC assigned its development rights to Dante's Partners, and we are fully committed to building and seeing this project true with your support. Moving forward on Parcel thirteen will mark Dante's Partners' twelfth project partnership with the district and the Office of the Deputy Mayor of, for Planning and Economic Development. Similarly, Parcel forty-two and Cap Vista, we don't take these responsibilities lightly. We also appreciate that both Mayor Bowser and the council continue to recognize the importance of investing scarce district-owned resources in housing that serve the public good, particularly for residents of modest income. Our current vision is to divide Parcel thirteen into two residential components, housing for seniors as well as housing for working-class families. Based on our preliminary research, there are currently no senior housing options on the St. Elizabeth campus or in the immediate surrounding area. We are honored to introduce what will be the first construction to this site. Our experience in developing affordable housing and workforce housing is extensive, including the development of Delta Towers in your word or formal word that you used to oversee, council member. And with that, we are proud of what we've accomplished there and intend to bring the same quality and intention to Parcel thirteen. Again, thank you for your leadership and support of black-owned businesses, locally-based firms, as we work to build and own a piece of D.C.'s future. I welcome your questions and look forward to further discussion.
And thank you for your testimony this morning. We appreciate it. Before I, I jump into my questions, I want to just take a moment to recognize Adrian Washington, who you know well and was the founder and is the founder of Neighborhood Development Company, which previously served as developer on this project. As some people may know, Adrian Washington is a D.C. native, is a respected figure in the district development space and worked tirelessly to bring smart and equitable development to places across the district, including Congress Heights, although his company is no longer the developer for this project. I would hope that he's proud of the work that's being done to bring attractive, affordable housing and economic development opportunities to the Congress Heights community. I believe he, he was actually born in Ward Eight, raised in Ward Eight, but I'm also happy to see that, as you mentioned, another black-owned developer in the district will be taking charge of the project moving forward. So I wanted to acknowledge that. I do want to mention, unlike our next, the bill that we had earlier, where there was an amended term sheet, this one is coming to the council a little differently. And I'm going to dig into this a little bit with you as well as with our, our government witness. It may result in us holding an additional hearing once we get an amended term sheet, but right now, I want to jump into the project. The term sheet provided was the introduction of the original bill. The term sheet provided was the introduction of the original bill. The project was intended to provide twenty one thousand gross square feet of first floor space for retail and commercial uses and four hundred and twenty one market rate and affordable residential units. However, your testimony noted the project will be divided into two residential components, providing housing for seniors and housing for working families. Do you intend on providing four hundred and twenty one residential units with this project? And if so, how many of those units will be set aside as affordable? And I got a number of, of other questions that I'll throw out after you respond to that one.
Sure. Well, first and foremost, I want to start, I want to answer by also letting you know that I got my start at Neighborhood Development Company. So that's where I interned and eventually got employed by Adrian. So this is a very full cycle moment for me, and it brings me nothing but great pride and honor to be able to move forward with a mission, especially given that he was the one that extended an opportunity for me where no one else did. So, so yeah, so we fully intend to honor Adrian that way in moving this site forward. So to answer your question specifically about the unit count, we, we, based on the, based on our preliminary review of the site, four hundred and twenty one units would be extremely challenging to finance in today's markets. And, and with that, we are looking to revisit how we can move forward with this site without one building that consists of four hundred and twenty nine units. And with that, our goal is to be able to break it up into two, whereby first and foremost, we're not cannibalizing each other. Because with that many units, by the time you lease up the four hundred unit, you're going to be competing with the first unit that, 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 that is now vacant. So in our opinion, we think it's best to break it up into two and subs, basically serving two different demographics. So one would be seniors and one would be family. What that unit count will consist of going forward is pre, is to be determined. Because without site control, which is why we're here today, it would be very challenging for us to continue to make any additional investments into this transaction.
Okay, and we heard a little bit about, on the prior measure that we had before us, but, so at this point, you don't, you can't, it hasn't been determined how many units are going to be on site. You don't know how many senior units versus how many are in the other building at this point?
At this point, no.
Okay. And, and you can't tell us at this point, like, you know, housing affordability, how many units would be affordable?
Oh, no, we plan for majority of the units to be affordable. So whatever we do, you ushered in an amazing bill a couple of years ago, known as ten.
Eight oh one.
Eight oh one, thank you. And we fully, fully expect to, to meet and honor that bill as far as whatever happens on the site.
Okay. What about the, the twenty one thousand gross square feet of retail that was originally provided in the term sheet?
We, we, we like the idea and we like the concept. I think as part of our exercise right now is, one, understanding what if any appetite exists to come to Saint Elizabeth campus from a retail standpoint. Hopefully, I'll be traveling with you soon to be able to make those pitches for retailers to come to the site. And to the extent that we have strong interest, our plan is to keep it to the extent that the interest isn't as strong, then that may have to be scaled down somewhat as well.
All right. And the, the disposition request has been amended now to reflect a request for a six year extension as opposed to a two year extension that's customary for these types of requests, which means that the mayor's disposal authority would now expire on March tenth, two thousand twenty nine. In your conversations with Dempad, and we'll hear from them next, but do you believe that it's going to take an additional four years for the executive to dispose of the property? Or why the need for such a long?
Sure, so I think to clarify, it's actually an, an additional four year extension, if I'm not mistaken. I think we had two years initially under Adrian.
So total of six.
Yes, total of six, yeah, yes. So, look, the, you and I know the challenges associated, you and I know the challenges associated with moving transactions in the district right now. We're hoping that things will change come next week, a little plug. But we need every time, we need every time that we can get to be able to move this transaction forward. So two years would be tight, four years would be great.
Okay, talk, talk about, in, in the bill's introductory memo.
Sure.
That was provided by Dempad. Dempad stated that complex site conditions involving Wamata infrastructure and soil conditions that provide challenges for the project. Take a, a moment to describe those challenges and, and whether you believe they will be resolved within the requested extension period.
Yeah, so phenomenal question. So there were two. Sure, there were two critical components that we would need to solve for as we move this transaction forward. So first and foremost, we have a huge Wamata easement on the site. So we need to make sure that whatever we do does not compromise the existing metro lines on the site. So this is something that we are very, very familiar with in terms of working with Wamata. However, that is a long, protracted, lengthy process that could take upwards of a year. We don't want that to be the case, but that could, that could take at least a year. In addition to that, after we've gotten, after we get Wamata's blessing, then we also now have to go secure similar approvals from HBRB, given the historical nature of the site as well. So those two key elements are, are, could easily eat into those two years, which could, which would, you know, find us coming back to you for additional extension, and no one wants.
Yeah. If, if this extension is granted though, and, and given the, the current challenges with the market conditions, do you have confidence though, if this extension is approved by the council, that you'll be able to get the finance you need to move this project forward within that timeframe?
Well, I would say the beauty about working with a firm like us is the fact that our reputation speaks for itself. So we are, we are still closing transactions in the District of Columbia. We just assisted a major nonprofit in closing a transaction two weeks ago. And we are on the brink of closing another transaction in, in, in Southeast DC. So I'm very confident that we'll be able to secure the necessary financing needed to move this transaction.
Do you anticipate applying for any additional support from District of Columbia government via HBTF or any other form of, of support?
Yes, we, we anticipate working with both DHCD and DCHFA to secure bonds and funding needed to move the project forward.
And, and always when I ask about involvement with the community where these projects are occurring, have you had the occasion to engage with, with the community around this project, Congress Heights? Say the least best, there is a community there now because there's been housing that's been built. People have moved in, families are living there, children are getting, being raised on that campus. There's also a, a lot of other activity happening on, on the campus and around where this project would occur. Have you had occasion to engage with the ANC or any community organizations about this project?
At the moment, not directly, but, but we plan to do everything in conjunction with, with our, our leader and our leader, Latrina Owens, who oversees the entire Congress site, so it's on Elizabeth campus.
Okay, so I mean, the, the community is going to deserve to, to hear about any of the changes that might result as this project has a new developer associated with it. Assuming that the council approves this legislation, once it receives amended term sheet, ideally, I guess in the fall, what's the project's current anticipated timeline for completion, do you think?
We plan to have it done prior to the expiration of the land disposition agreement, yes.
Okay. All right, I'm glad to hear that. I don't have any additional questions for you at the moment.
Okay.
Do you have anything else you want to put on the record before we?
I just continue to thank you all for your support. And like I said, this is a full circle moment. This, you know, this is a full circle moment for me personally, just given the history of the individual that provided me an opportunity. Otherwise, I would not be where I am today. So we ask that the council take that into strong consideration as they move forward on the site.
I appreciate you sharing that, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we are going to turn to our government witness, Latrina Owens, Executive Director of Saint Elizabeth's East Redevelopment Office of the Deputy Mayor for Planning and Economic Development. I'm going to swear you in before you're seated, if you don't mind raising your right hand. Do you swear or affirm under penalty of law that the testimony you're about to provide to the Council of the District of Columbia and the Committee on Business and Economic Development is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you very much. Good morning to you, thanks for joining us. Once you are seated, you can begin your testimony.
Okay. Good morning, Chairperson McDuffie, members and staff of the Committee on Business and Economic Development. My name is Latrina Owens, and I serve as the Executive Director of the Saint Elizabeth's East Redevelopment within the Office of the Deputy Mayor for Planning and Economic Development. I am here to testify in support of B two six dash zero one two one, the Saint Elizabeth's East Parcel thirteen Extension of Disposition Authority Amendment Act of two thousand twenty five. Approval of this act would extend the, like, the legislation authorizing the mayor to dispose of district owned real property known as Parcel thirteen located at eleven hundred Alabama Avenue Southeast, Washington DC, and identify for taxation and assessment purposes as Lot eight fifty Square S five, dash five eight six eight. This extension is necessary because the original legislation, B two four dash zero four six six, the Saint Elizabeth's East Parcel thirteen Surplus Declaration Disposition Approval Act of two thousand twenty one, which declared the property surplus and authorizes disposition expire on March tenth, two thousand twenty five. Without an extension, the district would lose its legal authority to move forward with the disposition, jeopardizing years of planning, investment, and community collaboration. While the primary purpose of today's hearing is to consider the extension of this authority, I'd like to provide brief background on the proposed disposition process. First, I want to thank you for holding this hearing and acknowledge the invaluable contributions of the community, particularly the past and present members of ANC eight C, the residents of Congress Heights, and Ward Eight, and the many other stakeholders who have helped make the revitalization of historic Saint Elizabeth's East a reality. Rich in economic promise, historic significance, and federal adjacency, the campus represents one of the last major redevelopment opportunities in the district, a chance to transform one hundred and eighty three acres into a thriving mixed use district of housing, health and wellness, innovation and community benefit. Located just under three miles from the US Capitol and served by the Congress Heights Metro Station, the site offers strategic access for development that serves residents, federal tenants, and regional demand. Parcel thirteen is a four point two acre unimproved parcel identified for mixed use development in alignment with the Saint Elizabeth's East two thousand twelve master plan. It is situated directly across the US, from the US Department of Homeland Security's consolidated headquarters and adjacent to the newly named Care First Arena. Following a competitive solicitation process, Dempad selected the Neighborhood Development Company as the Parcel thirteen developer in November twenty twenty. Despite strong community engagement and selection through a transparent process, progress on the disposition has been delayed. We respectfully request an extension of the mayor's authority to dispose of Parcel thirteen, of the Parcel thirteen property as NDC has faced significant financial headwinds. As of September thirty of two thousand twenty four, NDC was required to reduce its development portfolio due to unpaid rents and ongoing negotiations with traditional financial institutions. These challenges that many, these are challenges that many small and minority led developers have historically faced, particularly when relying on conventional lenders that may lack the flexibility or commitment to support community focused projects in complex capital markets. This project held particular, particular meaning for NDC's founder, Adrian Washington, a respected figure in the real estate development community for over twenty five years. Adrian grew up in Congress Heights. And leading this transformational development is his childhood, and his childhood neighborhood represented a full circle moment, a dream project for someone deeply committed to equitable growth in the district and rooted in Congress Heights. In accordance with the Land Disposition and Development Agreement, NDC executed an assignment and assumption agreement with Dante's Partners for the redevelopment of Parcel thirteen with the district's concurrence. Dante's Partners is a mission driven affordable housing developer with a longstanding track record for, of delivering equitable, community serving projects across the district. This transition ensures that the original vision of Parcel thirteen remains rooted in community centered development with the capacity and experience to bring it to fruition. We are excited that this project is moving forward and that momentum continues to build at the Saint Elizabeth's East Campus. While we are still finalizing the revised development plan, we anticipate submitting a new term sheet to the DC Council by September twenty twenty five. This updated proposal will outline a potentially smaller project scope, but will remain in compliance with DC Code ten eight oh one and continue to reflect key community priorities, including senior housing, three bedroom units as proposed in the original NDC concept. The NDC proposal also emphasized maximize CBE participation, high, high quality distinct architectural design, transit oriented development adjacent to the metro, enhanced connectivity to the Care First Arena, mixed use programming serving the surrounding community, and workforce training, food access, and other social benefits. We remain confident that Dante's Partners can carry this vision forward in a manner consistent with the community's expectations and the master plan's intent. The project is still expected to bring significant benefits, including mixed income housing creation, I mean, job creation, tax revenue, and the activation of a currently underutilized site. Dempad is proud to support this evolving yet vital initiative and respectfully request the committee's approval on the extension of the, to preserve the authority granted by B two four dash zero four six six and allow this transformative project to maintain the momentum for residents at the Saint Elizabeth's East Campus. Thank you for your time and consideration, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you for your testimony this morning, we appreciate it, Ms. Owens. I want to start kind of where you testified on page three of your testimony about while you're still finalizing the revised development plan, you anticipate submitting a new term sheet to the council by September twenty twenty five.
Yes.
There's a, there's a difference between this project and, and the project we, we just heard testimony on Malcolm X, whereas that project had a amended term sheet accompanying it, this does not. Talk to us about why that's the case.
Correct, so the timing for this extension, it came through early on, earlier this, earlier this year? Yeah, earlier this year. At the time, when we started this process, Mr. Washington was not going, going out of business. This was to extend the current legislation that he had during the project. During that timeframe, he did close his doors and then, and assignment was made. We then revised the legislation to include the new development partner.
Okay, well, talk about the assignment. How was Dante's Partners selected for the project?
So Dante's Partners was not selected by the district. The district concurred with Adrian's Washington assignment to Dante's Partners. So that would be probably a question for Mr. Benitie.
Okay. Talk about how much work Neighborhood Development did prior to the assignment. Is, is Dante's Partners essentially picking up where Neighborhood Development left off? Or are they actually going back to the drawing board, given market conditions and given, it sounds like some changes to the project?
So I think when you talk, when we're talking about due diligence, as far as some of the, the borings on the site, what has to be cleaned up. I know Neighborhood Development expended quite a bit of money, probably north of half a million dollars to do due diligence on the site. So with that information, I'm sure it was transferred to Dante's Partners during the assignment, so they would not have to pick up there. They would potentially, with their new design and what they're going to do on the site, understanding that the HVAC system for the Wamata Green Line is, it does border the site. So those are some of the, the challenges that Dante's Partners would also have to look at.
Okay, and, and as previously discussed with the developer during his testimony, the disposition request seeks an extension of six years, which amends the original disposition to tack on essentially additional four years.
Yes.
To two thousand twenty nine, but it's, it's, it's longer than the, the typical two year extensions request that we receive from the executive. Why do you anticipate that this disposal of this particular property will require four years rather than the customary two years?
So I think in agreement with what, what, what Mr. Benitie said is that really it's the capital market that's determining or giving additional, the additional length of time to allow people to secure the development financing. I don't want to, we don't want to do it for two years and then come back to you in two years. and then come back to you in two years for another two years. But we do see the, the challenge in the market and securing the funding. And then also understanding that to offset the affordable housing that they will probably need Housing Production Trust Fund dollars to assist with that development.
Can you repeat that last part, what you said about affordable housing that you just mentioned?
Just to offset some of it, yeah, they would need probably Housing Production Trust Fund.
Got it. Yeah. All right. I asked that question and he, and he mentioned that in his testimony. I want to talk about the part of the testimony where you mentioned the key community priorities and, and that you're going to remain in compliance with ten eight oh one. Talk about those key community, well, before we get to the key community priorities, let's talk about ten eight oh one. The requirements around affordability, those will remain and you will comply with every aspect of the law, ten eight oh one and any other applicable D.C. law with this. Okay. And in terms of the key community priorities, you listed maximization of CBE participation. You mentioned high-quality distinct architectural design, transit-oriented development adjacent to the metro. All those things are going to remain with this new development partner?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a CBE subcontracting plan already? I guess you wouldn't have it yet because you don't have.
Correct. So we will come up with the, have a CBE subcontracting plan, but you know, just historically from that most of the time when you have smaller business, they do hire local and they do hire from the district. That's what we're seeing in all of our projects. And they're also going above the CBE requirement that the district requires.
Above the required minimum threshold?
Yes.
Okay. And then the, the project will remain true to what was intended with the original disposition by Neighborhood Development in terms of the mixed-use program and service around the community and the workforce training, food access, and other social benefits?
So as Mr. Benitia said, I think we'll look at the retail. Now that we have a plan, we have, we'll have Parcel six coming before you in the fall. Now that there's a plan for the entire Thirteenth Street corridor, we need to look at it in its entirety to make sure that that corridor is not over-retailed.
What's, what's the timeline for Parcel six?
So it'll probably be submitted in the, in the fall.
Okay. What about Parcel seven, eight, nine?
Coming soon.
Okay. Okay. I know the folks who, who have invested in those homes and others who are enjoying what's happening on that campus are excited about the continued development there. So we want to make sure things stay on track.
And I do provide their, the HOAs there. I have a quarterly update meeting with them just so to keep them informed about what's going on.
Okay. I think finally I ask for the benefit of the public, people who may be listening, what actually happens if the council does not approve this extension?
What happens if the council does not approve it? So the extension, the authority will expire. We would have to, I would have to go back to market, probably to get, solicit a new developer. So that could be probably a year, year and a half time to do so. So that's what, it would, it would delay it. The work that has already been done, that's probably out at that point. And then, so we wouldn't have someone to step in to take over the deal.
Okay. But does Dempeh intend to re-engage the community? Once you have greater details about the, any modifications to the project, engage in the ANC, engage in that community again, and, and really dealing with the requirements under ten eight oh one, given the changes that are going to occur?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right. Make sure you circle back with us once you've done that. We look forward to getting the amended term sheet. I don't have any additional questions at this time. Is there anything else you'd like to put on the record before we transition to our next question?
No, thank you.
We will now turn to the third and final measure on our agenda, Bill twenty-six dash one forty-seven, the Streedery Program and Protest Process Amendment Act of two thousand and twenty-five. The proposed bill was introduced on February twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-five by Chairman Mendelson to request the mayor and referred to the Committee on Business and Economic Development with comments from the Committee on Transportation and the Environment on March fourth, two thousand and twenty-five. This bill, if approved, would allow a location under the jurisdiction of the Washington Convention and Sports Authority with commercial street frontage to register for a streedery and mandate that alcohol establishments apply for a streedery endorsement from the Alcohol Beverage and Cannabis Administration. This application shall include a forty-five-day public comment period. I want to note, for those watching this, bill is focused on AABCA streedery endorsements, which allow alcohol to be sold and consumed on streedery space, not the streedery public space permit, which is managed by the District Department of Transportation. I'll now call our single witness. Peter Wood is our sole public witness who signed up to testify on this bill. Commissioner Wood, we appreciate you signing up. You can begin your testimony. You have three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Peter Wood. I'm testifying today in my capacity as advisor, neighborhood commissioner, representing single-member district ANC one C zero three. So this is just my single SMD. I haven't talked to the whole commission about this testimony. I'd like to share my support for Bill twenty-six dash zero one four seven, Streedery Program Protest Process Amendment Act of two thousand and twenty-five. So the part of Adams Morgan I represent is home to many restaurants, taverns, and other small businesses, something like almost half of all of the Adams Morgan alcohol licenses or liquor licenses that I think are in my SMD. Many of these establishments also have streeteries, so I've been able to accompany that process pretty much literally from start to present over the last five years or so. I have a lot to say about streeteries in general, but of course I'll limit my commentary to how streeteries pertain to alcohol sales. For the past two-plus decades, many Adams Morgan residents have consistently held concerns about the effect of liquor sales in the neighborhood and really just more generally in D.C. Similarly, business owners have had many often divergent thoughts on how alcohol may or may not be good for business. In my experience as commissioner, I have seen that allowing alcohol consumption in streeteries has either been a net positive or maybe a neutral effect on the neighborhood, depending on how you look at it. This is due to several factors, which I've periodically discussed with constituents. So I'll go over a few. This is relatively brief testimony. One, in general, I think residents do like streeteries. They allow people to consume drinks outdoors. Again, talking specifically about the drink aspect or alcohol aspect. Allows residents to, and customers to consume drinks outdoors and really has kind of a general effect on the ambiance of a given neighborhood, which I think has emotional but also economic impacts that can benefit a lot of people in different ways. Business owners in general, from whom I've spoken to, tend to like streeters as well. Of course, none of these groups are a hundred percent of the neighborhood, but in general, that was, is my perspective, that streeteries can help increase beverage sales and can increase the appeal of a neighborhood for potential customers, kind of as a destination to go to, to invest in, and to spend time in. Residents do seem to, in general, want bar and restaurant patrons to treat the neighborhood with respect. So especially with alcohol sales, that means limited use of glass outdoors, especially disposable glass like beer bottles, and to enforce noise regulations that are already in place. And it's often a point of contestation of, if there's changes in the rules or in this case, solidifying of rules related to alcohol sales. If other regulations should become stricter or maybe more broad, I think in a lot of cases, it's more a matter of enforcement. There's reasonably good rules in place. It's just about getting the staff that is ready and available and, I guess, just proactive and making sure that those rules are implemented fairly and, I guess, broadly. And lastly, business owners in general, I think this is probably true of a lot of the items that have been discussed today. Business owners are struggling to maintain profitable operations, which affects a lot of things. Having clear and targeted regulations is more effective than having kind of vague oversight. It's not to say that, there is often conflict of just regulation in general, what that means for business operations, but the constituent business owners I have spoken to are often in favor of regulation. It can actually be good for business, but it's not to say all regulation is created similarly or applied fairly or even really just in a sensible manner. And also alcohol sales are a space-efficient way to improve margins. So that's something that I think is often on the minds of business owners and it's important to keep that in mind when we're shaping legislation because Adams Morgan, I think, is a pretty useful example of tension around alcohol sales and how that can be complicated. But also, if we are to support our small businesses, and I think that's a good thing for the city and our neighborhoods, you need to think of the ways that a business owner is thinking, which is making as much money as you can without having to have a lot of space for inventory, among other factors. Alcohol is maybe a problematic way of doing that, but it is a way of doing that. The streeder endorsement process, at least in my experience in ANC one C zero three, has been smooth. I've talked to a lot of business owners and helped some actually get streeteries in place just because of our conversations and outreach to other neighboring businesses. And throughout Adams Morgan, I think that's kind of applicable to most of the neighborhood, at least in my experience. Like any use of public space, responsible streedery implementation requires balancing competing interests and taking careful consideration of multiple perspectives. That said, I encourage you to make this legislation permanent in order to support the prosperity of neighborhoods like Adams Morgan and more broadly. That's all. Thanks for your time.
Thank you for your testimony, Commissioner. I really appreciate it. I was going to ask you just to give us a sense of the feedback you've gotten from businesses and residents, which is exactly what you did in your testimony, so I appreciate that. I kind of preempted my question there. I would love it. I don't, we don't have your testimony in writing. At this point, I'm not sure if you've already submitted it.
I'll send it. I wrote it last night, so I just haven't sent it yet.
Okay. All right. Great. If you could submit it so we can incorporate it to the record, we really appreciate it. And I noticed you, you were testifying, testifying in your capacity as commissioner for your SMD, which is one C O three. Did you get any feedback from any of your colleagues on the commission about the process or no?
I mean, we talk about, I've talked to commissioners about it for several years now. This specific bill, no, just I've kind of realized that this hearing was scheduled after our most recent full ANC meetings.
Oh, okay.
Chance to do that, but I mean, it's, there's like general opinions on these things, but specifically sort of streeteries. I think I could maybe tell in my head. Most people that I've served with over the last four-plus years seem to have, that have served as commissioners in Adams Morgan have seemed to have positive experience and perspectives. Maybe one or two have some points of skepticism, but in general, people like the streeteries. I mean, the one interesting point of kind of like, it's not even conflict, but it's just like an interesting and probably important like point of discussion is using public space for private businesses. And that is kind of what this is. One of the kind of arguments to that is that the alternative is using the same space for private vehicle ownership to be stored. So it's not that either particularly excluding the use of private-ish use of public space, but the general public has more access to a streedery to go sit down than they do to a space that is blocked by a car. So I think that's one.
I appreciate that. Thank you for, for mentioning that. And I appreciate you mentioning the need for clear and targeted regs and, and also your testimony about the endorsement process. You mentioned that it generally, your, your understanding is that it has been smooth, so it's, it's good to hear that as well. Let me ask you if you have any, any thoughts on the streedery pilot in Adams Morgan, which began last fall and the executive paused it in March. I wanted to just, you know, give you an opportunity, if you have any thoughts to discuss, any feedback that you've heard from constituents on the pause of the pilot program?
Yeah. I mean, I didn't mention it because I wasn't sure how relevant is to alcohol sales specifically, but one, I learned of the pause based on kind of just happen-chance commentary during one of our ANC meetings from a representative of Adams Morgan's Business Improvement District. So that's to say, I, to this date, I don't think I've received any official communication from anyone in D.C. government about what the status of the pilot project is currently the chairperson of our commission. So I'd think that I would get that. And I don't think any of the commissioners have heard that otherwise. So I don't actually know officially what the status of things are. I know that the pilot project received several hundred thousand dollars to really tear down all of the pre-existing streeteries on Eighteenth Street from Calorima to Columbia and put up a more uniform set of streeteries for all of the businesses that opted to participate that are more ADA compliant and have more uniforming like kind of color schemes and things. As far as I know, from what I was told secondhand, the pause is that the businesses that have the streeteries can't do anything to modify them, but they can still have the streeteries. And what I heard from rumors was that the mayor's office is intense or interested in trying to reduce the size of the streeteries to be significantly smaller, which in my mind would almost entirely make them futile. Like the whole point is that they take up space that people can actually occupy.
Yeah. And it's got to be, it's got to, I ask because, you know, e- even though it's not directly related to alcohol, it is directly related to the ability of those businesses to conduct business generally. But also, as we enter the warmer weather months, you, you would expect more people would be utilizing those outside spaces or the extended spaces that the streeteries have provided.
As the second it gets above like sixty-two degrees, those things are starting to get full of people. Like people are plumped to it. And people like outdoor space, I think that the public health emergency really changed people's perspectives on the values of outdoor space. That's true of parks as well, but like more germane to this conversation, the streeteries definitely. And like the business owners in general, from who I've spoken to and heard otherwise, they say, yeah, this is good. This increases my square footage and increases the amount of seats and tables that I can serve. And that's, I mean, the margins are thin for a lot of these places and a lot of places they've been around for a while are starting to go out of business again, which is an unfortunate wave of circumstances, but I mean, it means that we have to take these things into consideration to try to make it so that businesses can thrive.
Well, yeah, I appreciate again your testimony this morning. If you could provide it in writing, I appreciate you answering my questions. It's really helpful for the committee's consideration.
Appreciate it. Have a good day.
Thank you. Take care. We're now going to turn to our government witness, Fred Musali, Director of the Alcoholic Beverage and Cannabis Administration. As is customary, I'm going to swear you in before you're seated, so if you don't mind raising your right hand. Do you swear affirm under penalty of law that testimony you're bound to provide to the Council of District Columbia and the Committee on Business and Economic Development is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you very much, Director. Good morning to you. Thanks for joining us. You can begin your testimony when you're ready.
Good morning, Chairperson McDuffie, members of the committee, council staff, and members of the public. My name is Fred Musali, and I am the Director of the Alcoholic Beverage and Cannabis Administration. I would like to thank the committee for holding this legislative hearing today. I am here to testify in support of Bill twenty-six dash one forty-seven, the Streedery Program and Protest Process Amendment Act of two thousand and twenty-five, as introduced by Chairman Phil Mendelson at the request of the mayor, Muriel Bowser, on February twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-five. Bill twenty-six dash one forty-seven would make permanent the currently available streedery endorsement that is set to expire on July thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five. Specifically, since the COVID nineteen Public Health Emergency, licensed on-premise retailers, manufacturers, and convention center food and alcohol businesses that have been eligible to register with the Alcoholic Beverage and Cannabis Board to sell and serve and permit the consumption of alcoholic beverages on street-level outdoor space under certain conditions. Our agency supports the introduced version of Bill twenty-six dash one forty-seven and would like to highlight four aspects of the legislation. First, Bill twenty-six dash one forty-seven requires streedery endorsement applications to undergo a forty-five-day public comment period. This will treat streedery endorsement applications similar to outdoor sidewalk cafe and summer garden endorsement applications that are placarded by the board and subject to the protest process. Second, the proposed definition of a streedery set forth in Bill twenty-six dash one forty-seven was developed in collaboration with the District Department of Transportation. This compatible working definition of the term "streetery" will benefit both of our agencies and the public in implementing this legislation. Third, the annual fee of the streetery endorsement remains unchanged from previous years by Bill 26-147. Finally, ACPA is able to implement the introduced version of Bill 26-147 with existing resources. Thank you for allowing me to speak on this important piece of legislation. We look forward to working with the committee on Bill 26-147. I am available to respond to any questions that the committee may have. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony, Director. I do have some questions for you. First, I want to sort of level set. In March of 2020, the council enacted the COVID-19 Response Emergency Amendment Act of 2020, which you will recall to allow registered businesses to sell alcohol, I'm sorry, to sell alcohol in closed containers to individuals for carryout to their home with a food purchase. The council later enacted the Coronavirus Support Clarification Emergency Amendment Act of 2020, which first authorized a temporary basis, on a temporary basis, alcoholic beverage consumption on expanded outdoor space for registered food and alcohol establishments. These measures were intended to assist the hospitality industry's efforts to stay in business given the social distancing requirements in place during the pandemic. In subsequent emergency and permanent legislation, including reopen DC, the council extended the expiration date of the district's streetery program, but never made the program permanent. On July 31, 2025, the streetery endorsements are set to expire. How many businesses in the district currently have streetery endorsements?
Great question, Chairman. It's currently 222, which I think goes to the importance of this program, is that we have 222 businesses with streetery endorsements, which is a pretty significant amount.
It indeed is. What has ACPA heard from businesses and residents about streetery endorsements during the community meetings that you all have been a part of? And what impact have the endorsements had on businesses and those communities?
Yeah, so the streeteries have had a huge positive endorsement, I mean, implication for businesses and consumers. I think you heard that from the Commissioner, Commissioner Wood. I mean, you talked about COVID-19, right? And so, out of COVID-19, we had the carryout and delivery endorsement, which was critical. As you may recall, businesses were initially closed during COVID. We ended up making the carryout and delivery endorsement permanent. And then, when these businesses reopened, people wanted to dine outdoors, right? And so, you've kind of seen and heard from the Commissioner how outdoor dining has really taken off and been critical to the success of businesses and welcomed by, you know, residents of the district. So the one thing we heard, which is what this bill does, is that if we eventually made streeteries permanent, there should be a public comment period, given the fact there's never been one. So that's why that's in this bill.
Okay, that's good. And I'm sure communities and community leaders will appreciate that. I did want to ask, though, some jurisdictions in our region, such as parts of Bethesda and Silver Spring, have eliminated their streetery programs, while others, such as in Alexandria, have expanded one street area by permanently closing it to traffic. New York City has severely limited its streetery program, while New Jersey and Pennsylvania have permanent programs in place. Do you have an understanding of what the potential negative economic impact has been for businesses in these jurisdictions that have closed streeteries? Any insights on that?
No, but I would say, I think you mentioned New Jersey. That's worth mentioning. In November of '24, not that long ago, they made theirs permanent, citing the economic impact that we talked about and how important it was. Pennsylvania made theirs permanent July of 2024. New York, I think you mentioned there's been some issues there in rollout. In Virginia, you mentioned Alexandria. Herndon, just recently, in, I think, middle of 2024, just started a streetery, a permanent streetery, a template pilot streetery program. I think for us, given where we are, it would have a huge economic impact negatively if we did not allow these businesses to continue a streetery.
Thank you for that response. And reviewing the bill as drafted, it appears to sort of have conflicting requirements for Washington Convention and Sports Authority, or Events DC, the food and alcohol businesses. So will these businesses be required to receive an endorsement or license? And will they need any approvals from Events DC?
Sure, great question. Let me break those up into two categories. So the bill kind of does two things. Current law only allows a streetery endorsement or license, which we'll talk about, for the actual convention center. This bill actually changes it to any property under the jurisdiction of Events DC. So that way, it's, current law, it's limited to the convention center. This would expand it to any property under Events DC jurisdiction. So that's a change, I think, you know, it's worth highlighting.
Okay.
Because convention center properties do not currently have a license from us, we don't give them an endorsement because there's no underlying license. So they get a separate license from us for the outdoor public space. We're not interfering with Events DC, their jurisdiction inside their space, but they do not have jurisdiction over outdoor public space, which is why they get that separate license for us. And that's what we've been doing over the last several couple of years. We have not had any issue with that. This works smoothly. Manufacturers would get an endorsement similar to everyone else. I think the distinction with the manufacturers that may be a little confusing is manufacturers that currently don't operate past 1:00 AM do not currently go through the public comment period for other types of hours, whereas all the retail licensees, which would be the majority of the street, streetery endorsements, they all have to go through the public comment period.
Okay, got it. I appreciate that response. The bill includes language that's new, allowing, I'm sorry, newly allowing manufacturers to request hours of operational alcohol sales after 1:00 AM in their streetery endorsement application. You just talked a little bit about it, but why is that and which rationale there?
So it's just trying to make manufacturing, current law, consistent with 25723 of the code, which says that if a manufacturer's going to operate past 1:00 AM, they have to go through the public comment period. Happy to talk to the committee about that, but if you decide to allow manufacturers to apply for a streetery past 1:00 AM, we would recommend that it go through the public comment period, given the possibility of an impact on neighbors. If you decide to cut the streetery for manufacturers off at 1:00 AM, you know, we can work with you on that. And then, that would not go through the public comment period.
But making it go through the public comment period for manufacturers would be consistent with what's already in place for the retailers?
That's correct, that's correct. And that would make it consistent with DC Code 25723.
It is a little unclear to me if the proposed permanent streetery endorsements have the same basic requirements as a temporary endorsement. So I'm going to ask a few questions to clarify the administration's intent. Will businesses have to register with D-DOT?
So D-DOT, they would have to get a public space permit from D-DOT.
Okay. Are they required to locate in a commercial or mixed-use zone?
That is correct. They're not permitted to be in a residential zone.
Okay, thank you. And are there any noise restrictions that existed during the pandemic?
Yeah, they would still be subject to noise restrictions, which would generally kick in after 10:00 PM.
Got it. For streetery, for permanent streetery endorsements, how are settlement agreements intended to operate? Is this the same practice for like sidewalk cafes and summer gardens?
That's correct. So when these get, assuming the council agrees to make them permanent, they would undergo a public comment period. The ANC, community group, community organization, group of five or more residents, could enter into a settlement agreement that would dictate the terms of the streetery.
Okay. The bill appears to also propose to transition some streeteries on outdoor private space to summer gardens. For the benefit of the public, could you explain why that is?
Sure. When we had the COVID-19 pandemic, we had this use of outdoor public space and outdoor private space. So in some instances, there are some businesses that have a streetery endorsement, but it's actually on outdoor private space. Ultimately, that needs to be converted to an outdoor summer garden, and a summer garden is outdoor private space. And these outdoor streeteries do not have a public permit from D-DOT, which is what all streeteries will have to have. They instead have to get a certificate of occupancy from the Department of Buildings for that space. So we're just trying to, now that the streetery program hopefully becomes permanent, making sure that streeteries are only outdoor public space, that's not a sidewalk cafe. All outdoor sidewalk cafes will be designated as outdoor sidewalk cafes, and then all outdoor private space will all be designated as outdoor summer gardens.
Okay, thanks for that clarification. This is included in the bill, but I'd like you to state for the record who will be able to protest streetery endorsements in the process for doing so?
Sure, the ability to protest will be the same as it would be for an outdoor sidewalk cafe, outdoor summer garden, or any liquor license. It'll be an affected ANC, which is within 600 feet. It'll be a registered community association. It'll be an abutting property owner. It'll be a group of five or more residents. And then, either the mayor, or the MPD commander, designated commander for the district, can file a protest. And then, the mayor, I think, or the federal government can protest if they have property like within 600 feet of the proposed streetery.
Okay, thank you. The bill as drafted states